Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton is absent, Rowe, and Festerson is absent.
Please have a seat. So, a week ago today, our city went to the polls to elect our next mayor and city council members who will have the honor and responsibility to lead our city for the next four years. Regardless of the outcome, it is unfortunate, in my opinion, that turnout was so low. However, the voters have spoken, and it is our responsibility to work together as a council and with the new mayor to continue to make Omaha a better day, or better city, each and every day. And I said this during my campaign, and I truly mean it, and I hope it continues. Omaha truly has so much momentum, and together, we have so much more to accomplish. Madam Clerk.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Thank you. Welcome to today's city council meeting. We look forward to your testimony today. Please make sure that your phones are on silent or turned off. And if you have or need assistance to hear today's meeting, you can see Milford over here for a listening device, or you can also view the meeting with closed caption in the back of the room. Today, we have a presentation or proclamation that Councilmember Bagley will be reading for National Public Works Week.
Whereas public works professionals focus on the infrastructure, facilities, and services which are vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and to maintaining the standard of public health, quality of life, and well-being of the people of Omaha. And whereas vital public services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of equipment operators, maintenance foremen, engineering aides and techs, environmental quality control techs, and other public works professionals employed at all levels of government and the private sector. And whereas public works professionals are responsible for building and rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation infrastructure, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our communities. And whereas, the theme of National Public Works Week 2025 is People, Purpose, Presence, highlighting the three cornerstone ideals that motivate public works professionals to serve in their communities every day, more often working in the background without fanfare, yet leaving a positive impact in advancing the quality of life for everyone. And whereas, it is in the public interest of all citizens of Omaha, including civic leaders, to gain knowledge of and maintain an understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas, the year 2025 marks the 65th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Omaha officially designates the week of May 18 through 24, 2025, as National Public Works Week, and urges all individuals to recognize the contributions made to the community by our public works professionals. In witness whereof, we have set our hands and caused the official seal of the city to be affixed on this 20th day of May 2025.
Mr. Rousser. Name and address for the record.
Councilman Bagley, yep, Austin Rousser, 7614 Maywood Street. I appreciate it very much, members of the city council. I am the past president and current delegate for the Nebraska chapter of the American Public Works Association. Thank you for recognizing National Public Works Week with us as we celebrate that this week in our office and across the nation and worldwide. Public works professionals come from a variety of backgrounds. There are snowplow drivers, electricians, engineers, policymakers, clerks, welders, laborers, mechanics, arborists, heavy equipment operators, and much, much more, working together for the common good of their communities. The American Public Works Association is a gathering place for these professionals and has over 32,000 members worldwide, large association. The theme for the 2025 National Public Works Week is People, Purpose, and Presence. This theme highlights three cornerstone ideals that motivate public works professionals to serve in their communities every day. Meeting the needs of people is what gives public works its sense of purpose. Many times, public works professionals will never meet those whose lives have been impacted because when things are going right, no one knows that public works is there. Yet with our, yet with or without fanfare, public works is ever-present, working in the background to advance the quality of life for all. Thank you for helping us celebrate the quiet work of these professionals that make life better for all of us, and be happy to entertain any questions or comments, but overall, I appreciate you recognizing this with us and helping us to celebrate this important week for our profession.
Thank you. Mr. Tyler.
The only thing that I would like to add is, Bob likes to say that we touch people's lives from the time they wake up till the time they go to bed. You know, when you flush your toilet, when you drive to work, those traffic lights are keeping you safe. We have over 700 employees in the City of Omaha in public works, and we're here to try to make sure everyone's being safe every day. And thank you for everything you do for public works and with the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bagley.
Thanks, Mr. Harding. I just wanted to say thanks, Austin, and part of the proclamation, I won't reread again, but it said, "It is in the public interest of all citizens of Omaha, including civic leaders, to gain knowledge of and maintain an understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs." I can say, being on the city council, I've had the honor for four years, two of which is I've been the chair of the Public Works Committee, and I think I've gained a great understanding, and I learn more every day talking to Austin and Jim and Bob and his great team, on the great work they do behind the scenes, keeping our city moving, our city safe, and addressing the problems that the seven of us up here get on a daily basis. So I want to thank the public works employees, the local 251 union that represents a lot of those men and women who work selflessly keeping our city safe. So thanks, Austin and Bob, and everybody in public works. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Item six, to consider a Class C liquor license for Carnali Indian Cuisine located at 843 North 98th Street, A's Communication, Opposition.
Thank you. This is the public hearing for item number six. Do I have any proponents? I think we have, is the applicant by Zoom? Okay. All right. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, sir, everybody. So my name is Manoj Rokaya. So I am the owner or manager of my restaurant. So my restaurant name is Carnali Indian Cuisine. So address of my restaurant is 843 North 98th Street, Omaha.
Okay, thank you. You're here just to answer any questions, correct?
Sorry?
You're here just to answer any questions, correct?
Yeah.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. May I go?
Yes.
Oh, thank you, sir.
Yes, you may. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. I have a motion and a second. Vote, please.
Bagley, Hug, Johnson, Rowe, Harding.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to zero.
Congratulations, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Item seven, to consider a Class C liquor license for End Zone Sports Grill located at 8525 Park Drive.
This is the public hearing on item number seven. Do I have any proponents? And I think we have the applicants being represented by Nikki Connor, who is on Zoom. I think we have you off of mute, Nikki. Just your name and address for the record.
Nikki Connor, 19032 R Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68135. Here on behalf of the applicant for any questions.
All right, thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Second, motion is second. Roll call.
Bagley, Hug, Johnson, Rowe, Harding.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item eight, to consider a Class I liquor license for Base Camp located at 7309-7312 Jones Street.
This is the public hearing on item number eight. Do I have any proponents?
Afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is David here, David Houghton, here on behalf of the applicant. Maholic Properties LLC doing business as Base Camp. My address is 2804 South 87th Ave. The business is located at 7309 to 7312 Jones Street, inside the electronics building in Nebraska Furniture Mart. This is for a Class I liquor license. They'll be taking over for HKGK LLC, who currently has a Class IK liquor license. If the council has any questions, I'd be happy to answer it. The vice president of the LLC, Darcy Maholic, is here as well to answer any questions you may have. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Motion is second. Roll call.
Bagley, Hug, Johnson, Rowe, Harding.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to zero.
Thank you.
Item nine, to consider a Class I liquor license for Flora Cafe located at 1009 Farnham Street.
This is the public hearing for item number nine. Do I have any proponents? Come on down, please. Okay, Mr. Dahlquist, I think we have you off of mute. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, thank you. Rodney Dahlquist, 1403 Farnham Street, for the applicant. Also present are corporate members of the applicant that I can see have just approached the podium.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Cecily Murillo.
And your address, please.
My home address.
Either your home or your business address.
The business here for Flora Cafe is 1009 Farnham Street.
Okay, and here to answer any questions?
Yep.
Kaylee Murillo, and then 1009 Farnham Street.
All right, thank you. Any other proponents? Any opponents? The public hearing is closed, and I'll note that this has to go with waiver of park rule seven. Do you have a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Johnson. You're recognized, Ms. Johnson.
Hi, how are you?
Hello, good.
Good. Can you tell me a little bit about your business?
This is, Mexican, would be a Mexican restaurant that will serve brunch in the mornings and kind of transfer into like an evening Mexican food.
And what will be your hours of operation?
What do we say the hours are going to be?
8:00 AM till 9:00 PM, Monday through Thursday, and then Friday through Sunday, we will close at 10:00 PM.
So you're open seven days a week and longer hours on the weekend?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, motion to approve, subject to Rule seven.
With the waivers, Rule seven, okay. Motion, go ahead. Motion is second. Roll call, please.
Bagley, Hug, Johnson, Rowe, Harding.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to zero.
Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 10, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for South Side Terrace 3 located southeast of 30th and T Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
This is the public hearing for item number 10. Do I have any proponents, please?
Hello, Bill Lu Cash, Brinshaw Development, 903 South 184th Avenue Circle. Have some things to show. Is this working now?
You can give, yes.
Okay, great. Not sure if it's showing up or not for you, but this plat, the preliminary plat, excuse me, is for two developments, actually. South Side Terrace Phase 3, which is the next onsite development phase for, it's not on?
No, it's not working. Sorry, Bill. But go ahead. You do a very good job of describing it.
I'll just pretend that it's working. It will support two developments. Most of it is South Side Terrace Phase 3, which is 113-unit development with, excuse me, each unit is anywhere from one to seven bedrooms, so quite a range of households being served with this development. There are 87 affordable units in here. 55 of those are supported by project-based vouchers provided by the Omaha Housing Authority. It will also support the development of South Side Terrace Senior, which is a 42-unit development of one- and two-bedroom homes. That will be on the 30th Street side. Everything to the east then will be South Side Terrace Phase 3 itself. Have some nice renderings, but I won't show you those. They're very nice, if you can see that in your mind's eye. I'm here to answer any questions you might have. It's a great development. It furthers affordable housing in Omaha, and just housing in general in Omaha. It's desperately needed in South Omaha, and thank you so much for your continued support of this choice neighborhood effort. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
Good afternoon, councilmembers. Joanie Balk, Omaha Housing Authority, 1823 Harney Street, here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Do we have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second, motion is, our roll call, please.
Bagley, Hug, Johnson, Rowe, Harding.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Items 11 through 15 can be considered together for McGill Industrial Park located northeast of Rainwood Road and Blair High Road. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. B's Communication, Opposition. Items 11 and 12 are ordinances to rezone this property from AG District to GI District and HI District. Item 13, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item 14, a resolution to approve a special use permit to allow scrap and salvage services in the GI District. Item 15, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
Thank you. This is the public hearing and vote today on items 11 through 15. Do I have any proponents, please?
Thank you, man. Thank you, Councilman Harding. Brent Beller, 1140 West Center Road, on behalf of the applicant. With me today is Tim McGill and Jesse Caliberto. They are the co-developers of this development, along with Caleb Beasley with E&amp;A. Before I start, I think it's important for me to recognize the amount of work that our Public Works Department does on projects like this. No one sees it, and this goes for the Planning Department, too. The amount of back and forth that we, that they deal with with us, it's to be commended for a city of our size and the amount of stuff they turn. So we appreciate it here in the development community. This is not working?
No.
So the jury's still out on our IT department. Okay, I have wonderful pictures to show you. We're basically up on, in the Irvington area, just off of Rainwood Road. Highway 133 is on our west side, and then Bennington Road is up on the north side. If I could show you our master plan, the city's master plan always called for this area to be industrial. The reason I bring that up is there are some larger acreages to our east. There is a ridge line that basically runs along 108th Street, and that's where a lot of these acreages are. We understand it, no one likes change, but when developers go and they look at ground, we look for what the master plan calls for. And so when this particular piece of ground was up for sale by the Frost family, they had long farmed it. The developers took advantage of that, and they are going to do industrial. So what the final plat is, so first off, what's before you is rezoning from AG to GI and HI. So there's 20 lots in this development. Two of those lots, two of the bigger ones, Lot 16 and Lot 19, we're actually zoning those HI. And the reason I mention that is everyone gets nervous when you say HI, because HI is a really intense use in our city. But what we've done, and we're okay with it, we actually support it, was the city had asked, hey, can we put a covenant on Lots 6 and 19 that restrict any heavy industrial uses except for heavy industry? And the reason I mention that is heavy industry would allow for like a batch plant or that sort of concrete manufacturing, that sort of thing within the development. Any other sort of HI uses, your scrap and salvage, landfill, hazardous materials, or a car dump, or anything, we're not going to have that. That's not what this is. If you go just south of us in the Rainwood Point development, that's SID 552, that's effectively what this will look like. That whole corridor is going to be industrial. If you were to go to the west side of 133rd, you're going to see that is all data center with an unnamed user, but there is four or 500 acres over there that's all industrial. So we're falling in line with what's being proposed. So then we have a final plat that's before you, and then last is a special use permit for Lot 18. That Lot 18 does allow for salvage and scrap. However, the restriction there is it's only for this particular user, and they're going to do aggregate recycling. That's basically taking old concrete. It's a very clean, environmentally friendly source. They grind that up, they make it into a real fine particulate that we use to lay the base on our concrete roads here in the City of Omaha. So that's what they're doing there. They have high-powered watering systems that kind of, all the particulates fall down. They have a street sweeper that cleans it. They have, there's basically screening that screens their whole site. So we're very sensitive to that. The other thing that people always ask is just sound. They're subject to, I think it's 55803, which is our sound ordinance, which allows for 80 decibels, and they're about 65 to 70 decibels there at their loudest. So everything we're doing complies with the preliminary plat that was before you last fall. We had our neighborhood meeting with some of the residents last July. That was well-attended. Lots of good feedback. We're out there, grading has started. So this comes before you with both the Planning Department and Planning Board's recommendation for approval. And should you have any questions, we're here to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. So, motion is second. Roll call, please.
Bagley, Hug, Johnson, Rowe, Harding.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to zero.
Thank you.
Item 16, an ordinance to rezone property located at 1401 Veterans Drive from DR District to R4 District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
This is item number 16, the public hearing and vote today. Do I have any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Motion is second. Roll call.
Bagley, Hug, Johnson, Rowe, Harding.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to zero. Item 17, an ordinance to rezone property located at 965 South 51st Street from R4-35 District to R5 District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. B's Communication, Opposition.
This is item number 17, the public hearing and vote on this is today. Do I have any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. No, I'm sorry, Danny. Councilmember Bagley, you're recognized.
Quick question for Director Fanslaw.
Dave Fanslaw, City Planning.
Dave, good afternoon. I had a good chat with Eric Anglin, who does a great job on your staff. I guess he's back there, I can see him. Can you just kind of walk through quickly, Dave, this ordinance going from R4 to R5, what that allows?
Sure. Both the R4 and the R5 zoning districts are considered low-density residential. So this request is in conformance with the master plan. This area is programmed to be low-density residential. So we support the rezoning, A, because it is in conformance of that master plan, and I believe the plan is for, once it's rezoned, the owner will build something like a duplex or a single-family attached. And so to be able to do that type of housing, he needs the R5 zoning district to do that.
And this gives him the option, when he decides which one of those routes he wants to go, is that correct?
Correct. And in the end, I mean, if he chooses not to do a duplex or a single-family attached, he could still do a single-family home as well.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Fanslaw.
You're welcome.
I'll make a motion approved. Thanks, Mr. President.
You bet. Motion is second. Roll call, please. Ron, you come in late. Mr. Hug, you're recognized.
Thank you. President Harding. Dave, R4 to R5 does not change the setbacks?
No, it does not.
So R4 and R5 setbacks are the same?
Correct. It'll be same setbacks as R4.
Okay, all right, thank you. You bet.
Okay, now I believe we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Bagley, Hug, Johnson, Rowe, Harding.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to zero. Item 18, an ordinance to rezone property located at 3819 X Street from R7 District to R4 District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
This is item number 18, the public hearing and vote today. Do I have any proponents?
Afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Pete Matthews. I own 3819 X Street. The request today is just to bring this property into conformance with the master plan. Currently, R7 looking for R4. I'll be available if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents? Any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Motion is second. Roll call.
Bagley, Hug, Johnson, Rowe, Harding.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to zero. Item 19, an ordinance to rezone property located northeast of 40th and Blondo Streets from R5-35 District to R5 District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
This is the public hearing and vote today on item number 19. Do I have any proponents? Any opponents? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Second, motion, or roll call, please.
Bagley, Hug, Johnson, Rowe, Harding.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to zero. Item 20, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the ACI 3 PL overlay district. To incorporate into that district, the property located at 707 North 102nd Street and 10,000 California Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
This is item number 20, the public hearing and vote today. Do I have any proponents?
Lana Bayless with DLR Group, 6457 Francis Street, Suite 200. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, West Roads LLC, just in case you have any questions.
Thank you, Lana.
You bet.
Any other proponents? Any opponents? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Motion is second. Roll call.
Bagley, Hug, Johnson, Rowe, Harding.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to zero.
Thank you.
Item 21, an ordinance to approve a major amendment to a PUR overlay district located at 1440 South 13th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
This is the public hearing and vote today on item number 21. Do I have any proponents? Any opponents? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Motion is second. Roll call, please.
Bagley, Hug, Johnson, Rowe, Harding.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearings on agenda items 22 through 25 were held on May 6, 2025. I don't see any lights on. Do I have a motion? Motion is second. Roll call, please.
Bagley, Hug, Johnson, Rowe, Harding.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items 26 through 45 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item you wish to address, identify your name and address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. And I'll note that we do have Chris Astoli on Zoom for... And I'll note that we do have Chris Astoli on Zoom for item number 27. This is the public hearing? Yes, sir.
Hi. Terrence Badgett, Elks Lodge, Number 92, 2420 Lake Street.
And the agenda item, please, Terrence.
I'm sorry?
The agenda item? I don't know if you said.
It was just for a Class C license.
26. Okay, thank you. All right.
Agenda item?
26. Yeah. Are there any other speakers on agenda items 26 through 45? Seeing none, do I have a... Public hearing is closed. Do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Roll call, please.
Begley, Hug, Johnson, Rowe, Harding.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to zero. Item 46, an ordinance to approve an agreement with Sampson Construction Company, Inc., for construction of the Millwork Parking Garage with a guaranteed maximum price of $26 million.
This is the public hearing today on item number 46. Do I have any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 47, an ordinance leaving a special tax and assessment on all lots and pieces of real estate within Road Maintenance District 2023-01.
This is the public hearing today on item number 47. Do I have any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 48, an ordinance to approve a wastewater service agreement with the city of Papillion.
This is the public hearing today on item number 48. Do I have any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 49, an ordinance to approve a major amendment to mixed-use district development agreement for Pepperwood Village located at 505 North 155th Plaza to allow for freestanding fast-food use. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
This is the public hearing today on item number 49. Any proponents?
Joe Detlofs, 10836 Old Mill Road, here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Joe. Any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 50, an ordinance to approve an amendment to special pay 401A plan and health reimbursement arrangement for the Omaha Professional Firefighters Local 385.
This is the public hearing today on item number 50. Do I have any proponents?
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. I'm Trevor Towey, President Omaha Professional Firefighters. I'm here as a proponent and to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Do I have any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Oh, Danny? I'm sorry. Mr. Begley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. Towey, you don't have to get up, but I just wanted to make sure, did you plug your meter today? Thank you. Thanks, Mr. President.
There's got to be an inside joke there, but okay. Any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Item 51, an ordinance to approve up to four one-year agreement extensions to provide homeless encampment cleanup on an as-needed basis.
This is the public hearing today on item number 51. Do I have any proponents? Any opponents?